Tonight's special meeting of the Edmond City Council is called to order. First of all, I want to thank you all for watching tonight and for being here in this meeting tonight. We're holding a public meeting under the new CDC recommendations and guidelines attempting to limit the people attending the room to 10 people and distancing our council member on the dais in accordance with the latest guidelines that we're receiving from CDC. On the dais tonight, I have Ward Two City Councilmember Josh Moore to my right, Darrell Davis is to his right, far right there, and Ward Four, City Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem is Nick Massey. Nick, glad to have you here tonight. Not present is City Councilmember David Chapman, who was unable to attend tonight's special meeting. Our city staff, our city manager Larry Stevens, and our city attorney Steve Murdock normally sit on the dais, but they're right here in front of us tonight, and they are here like they always are to make sure that we get the latest information from city staff. We also have a number of our city staff here attending that are responsible for the safety and protection and some of the emergency responses in our community. But I know most of the city employees would like to be here tonight, would like to know, and their managers would like to all feel sure that they are committed to doing their part in making all of our efforts and our sacrifices count. I've been around a while. We don't have many moments in our life as a nation that is like the one that we are facing today, but we will succeed. I want the citizens of Edmond to all know you can count on the citizens and employees of the city of Edmond to do their best and more. At 5:00 a. o. a. week ago, my wife and I were attending a meeting downtown with 18,000 other people who thought they were going to attend a basketball game between the Thunder and the Utah Jazz. Councilman David Chapman was part of that good group, and so was our Assistant City Manager Steve Combs. We thought we'd see a great game, but that night, the world turned. No one would have thought there was a problem with having 18,000 people in an arena, but tonight, we're worried about whether to have 10 people in this room. In just one week, our world has turned on a dime, and everything has changed because of the coronavirus. Who would have thought that in a week, our nation would jointly close our borders with Canada, eliminate almost all travel, air travel, and cancel every sporting event under the sun? But it happened. I want you to know the city of Edmond is committed to cooperating fully with the guidance, and will do everything in our power to minimize the impact and protect the health and safety of our citizens. One week ago, the World Health Organization, on March 11, declared the coronavirus a pandemic. Two days later, the President of the United States declared a national emergency on March 13. Governor Stitt declared a state of emergency on Sunday, March 15. Tonight, three days later, our city council is having a special meeting. The sole agenda for tonight's special meeting is the Edmond proclamation of a state of emergency. The city charter for cities are different, but the city charter for Edmond requires a process that's a little different from other cities. For a declaration of an emergency is not the sole discretion of the mayor, and it takes a motion by the city council to declare an emergency. On Monday night, we published their intent for this special meeting. Our staff has scrubbed and re-scrubbed this proclamation, and I've been assured by our city manager and our city attorney that we're current, as of right now, with the latest guidance. We knew last week that action would be necessary, and staff and the city attorney have been working to update many of our city services and conform with all the changes and recommendations that will be contained in this emergency declaration tonight. On Monday, your mayor and your mayor pro tem met with the city manager and city attorney and outlined a plan to have this meeting. Later that day, our city manager arranged to have a full meeting with all of the staff members, and we had a telemarketing meeting, or telemeeting, with Governor Stitt about the latest issues at his state level. We have coordinated the proposal with the county health department, and we are following their recommendations. Their recommendations are also reflected in the Oklahoma City Emergency Proclamation. The rules proposed tonight will conform with those approved by Oklahoma City. There is nothing in our rules contained in this proclamation that isn't already done on a volunteer basis by most of the institutions in our city. It is a truly remarkable situation that we have. The public commitment to take the extraordinary steps to protect our citizens is already in place. I find it incredible, without prompting how the business community, the churches, the hospitals, the volunteers, schools, citizens are all committed to protecting our community, and they are doing everything we can and more to minimize this outbreak in our nation, our state, and our city. It is truly a remarkable commitment. I'm gonna... Would you like to... Nick, would you like to talk a little bit about our meeting with the city manager this morning, or last Monday morning, and what we got there?
Well, with the rapidly developing information, it was clear we needed to do something. We met to talk about that, what the CDC guidelines were, what some of the other cities were doing. I had a conference call with the governor, who assured us of the things that the state was doing, that was what was being done at the national level. He assured us that the supply lines were still open and functioning. We have some run on supplies in some locations, which is disrupting that, but there are ample supplies in the state, and they will get there. He assured us that they're getting closer and closer to having adequate testing for the virus, which is the core of the problem, in my opinion, and what most people say, that until we get to where we can do testing on a large-scale basis, we don't really know who's sick and who isn't, and what the extent of the problem is. So hopefully... And when you don't know, there's a tendency to kind of err on the side of caution, which is what you need to do. So hopefully, we will have adequate testing soon. We're doing all we can to protect our citizens and, at the same time, provide the services that we need to provide to our citizens.
Larry, do you want to address what the city's been doing?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just, I want to go through a couple of specific examples of things that either have been done or will be done concerning this situation. As one example, the senior center was closed during the day on Monday. We intend to close our city administration building at 7 North Broadway starting tomorrow, and included in that building are the utility customer service offices, the human resource department, and the finance department. Our city people are wiping down park facilities in our various park areas on a regular basis because we know that we're going to have and are having a lot of people using those facilities in the next few weeks. We have no utility customers that are currently disconnected in any of the houses in our community that are occupied. We have some that we have not been able to make contact with over the last few weeks, and basically, that normally means, and in this case, I think it does too, that those are unoccupied houses. Our golf course continues to be open for regular play. We'll have no group outings during a certain period of time, and we'll have restaurant takeout only from the golf course restaurant as well. The CityLink bus service, no plans to cancel or disrupt those services. All of those buses are cleaned and sanitized on a regular basis every night. Just this afternoon, I got a call from Mike Fina, the Executive Director of the Oklahoma Municipal League, and he wanted me to be aware of some potential help that may be available for small businesses in our community. And he told me that an SBA loan package will be available tomorrow online, and to access that, people only need to go through our EEDA website, which is simply eeda.com. There would be no hardship requirements for this loan application. He told me that small businesses would be eligible for up to $2 million in loans for operational purposes, not capital projects. The terms of the loan would be up to 30 years. The interest rate was projected to be in the neighborhood of 3.25% to 3.75%. Nonprofits can also apply for this program too, and the interest for nonprofits, the interest rate would be roughly 2%. And as we have discussed with all of you over the last couple of weeks, the variables in this situation change not only daily, but several times a day. We have staff groups that are meeting constantly to try to stay abreast of developments as they occur. That will be an ongoing process. As we all also know, there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty out there right now. So we're trying to do our best to keep our people as informed as possible, and that certainly also applies to our city employees. We have almost 800 city employees. We communicate with them on a regular basis, just communicated again with them yesterday in terms of the latest information on this. We'll continue to do so, not only from a standpoint of their personal well-being and that of their families, but their ability to help us provide services to the people in our community as we get through this. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're doing. We have... A lot of our top management staff is here if you have any specific questions, but that gives you a general idea of some of the things that we're looking at. So, thank you.
I want to make a comment. Thank you, Larry, for all your hard work on that. I really appreciate the video that you did for the city employees yesterday. I thought that was outstanding, and I just want the citizens to know that the staff is committed to this and 100%. Mr. Murdock, is our proclamation about ready to be read?
It could be, Your Honor. We have the direction that I have received from the council, or from my understanding from my conversations with you and Mr. Massey on Monday specifically, was that we wanted to take a look at what the city of Oklahoma City was doing with regard to any emergency proclamations and mirror those as closely as possible as they were applicable to our community. I've done a couple of different drafts, and the draft that I've placed on your... in front of you today, this afternoon, again, it mirrors Oklahoma City with regard to the important ingredients or the important sections are, that all previously approved special event permits for events March 18, 2020 through April 19, 2020 are hereby revoked, and all events with 50 or more participants at city-owned operated facilities are hereby suspended until further notice. And I might add that a lot of special events were being canceled even before we got to this point, and so that's well at hand. Further ordered, that the city manager is directed to not discontinue water and utility services for customers unable to pay their bills for a period of 30 days. Mr. Stevens previously addressed that issue. Also, similar to, and if not identical to, what Oklahoma City does or has done, is it's further declared order that all users of CityLink must maintain a distance of at least three feet from other users when possible. Then yesterday, Oklahoma City, when they issued, the mayor issued an additional proclamation, issues related to certain food service and other facilities was identified, and so they issued a proclamation, and we've mirrored that here with regard to bars without on-premise food service. Hookah bars, cigar bars, and vaping lounges shall be closed to the public. This does not prohibit the presence of personnel required for the maintenance of the facility or grounds. All other persons are restricted from such places. The draft that you have in front of you now, that would go into effect basically midnight tonight and would continue until April 6, 2020. And Oklahoma City had specified April 12, and I was asked to adjust that to make that be consistent with the schools being closed in Edmond until April 6. That's subject to your direction. We can make changes as you direct. The second category, also consistent with Oklahoma City, related to bars with on-premises food service, breweries, taverns, and restaurants are restricted to providing only takeout or delivery of food and sell a prepackaged alcohol authorized for sale under state law. Such locations are otherwise closed to the public and persons other than employees and are restricted from such places or any other purpose. The provisions does not include institutional or in-house cafeterias serving residents, employees, childcare facilities, hospitals, or long-term care facilities. Again, the time period, midnight tonight, basically, through April 6. Finally, it's further declared in order that effective midnight through April 6, the following places are closed to the public and all persons except personnel necessary for the maintenance of the facility and grounds are restricted from such places. Athletic gyms, exercise facilities, indoor sports facilities, indoor climbing facilities, bowling alleys, skating rinks, trampoline parks, and similar recreational facilities. Item B, movie theaters. Item C, food courts. And then finally, we make a general statement. It's further ordered and declared that all Edmond citizens should take extra measures to put distance between yourself and other people to further reduce your risk of being exposed to the new virus, and should avail themselves of the resources and information through the Oklahoma City County Health Department, Oklahoma State Department of Health, and the Center for Disease Control. The term that I made a little bit changed from what I sent you earlier is the declaration shall continue in effect until such time it is terminated or amended by issuance of a subsequent declaration. And I might add that the next regular scheduled meeting for the city council is next Monday night, March 23, and I placed an item on the agenda that we could amend or make changes to this declaration as if necessary, because just trying to look ahead, there could be additional reasons to make changes. Now, the next regular scheduled meeting after March 13 is not to April 13, but with 48 hours advanced notice, we could certainly call a special meeting, and if conditions weren't, we could call an emergency meeting without the necessity of the additional 48 or 24 hours advanced notice. Tried to avoid that because we want to give everyone as advanced notice as much as possible, but glad to answer any questions. And like I said, the dates that are indicating the termination dates, those are subject to your direction and your discretion as to when you want to change those or leave those like that. They are slightly different than what Oklahoma City has. Glad to answer any questions.
Just to make one thing clear, our scheduled city council meetings right now are March 23 and then April 13?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Regular scheduled meetings.
Okay.
But like we're doing today, this is a special meeting, and we can hold those at any time.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. One of the things that I thought was most important in here is we have revoked any special events or permits from March 18 to April 19. I think that's a good thing, and most of those events had already been canceled anyway, and this may give them some basis for declaring insurance issues or something like that. I think that's a good thing. The city manager is directed to discontinue water and utility services for... is not to discontinue water, utility services for any customer unable to pay their bills for a period of 30 days. That's in there. CityLink, as you mentioned, has that for three feet for all the users wherever possible. And we have further declared and ordered that all bars without food premises, hookah bars, cigar bars, vaping lounges shall be closed to the public through April 6 right now. That does not prohibit the presence of personnel required for the maintenance of the facility. Any questions with any of those items right now?
So this, back up to kind of the first paragraph, the 50 or more participants?
Right. That's the current CDC recommendation, although they're hedging on that, I think.
Yeah, and that still matches Oklahoma City right now?
Right now.
Okay. I think that might be the moving target. I mean, one of the moving targets there.
Next page is, they talked about that all bars without... with on-premises food, breweries, taverns, and restaurants are restricted to providing only takeout delivery of food and sell a prepackaged alcohol. Okay. That's pretty fair. I'll defer my comments. Yeah, I must... We did a survey. Had staff at the direction of the city attorney contacted about 25 restaurants, and all but eight had already initiated takeout only. And I thought that was sort of... It spoke well of the efforts of the folks. Obviously, the folks that hadn't probably don't have the takeout or drive-through capability in their operation, so I understand that. Anyway.
What I've seen with other restaurants across town that didn't have a drive-thru, they were actually standing at the door. They had a process for you to either... One line was that you prepaid with some other type of social media-type card, the other one that you had cash, that you ordered, and you did not come into the premise, but you were able to come to the door, and they were still able to serve people.
Having said that, it should be pointed out that if a restaurant doesn't have that capability of somebody places an order to go, they can go inside, get that order, and pick it up. It's much different than sitting down and ordering dinner at the table. So it's just a matter of what fits for that organization. Not everybody has a drive-up window. Not everyone can deliver a curb service, but certainly, you can place your order, go inside, pick it up, pay for it, and go. And I think that's far less ominous than 500 people standing in line at Walmart waiting to check out.
Amen.
Well, thank goodness, somebody's doing very well in town. I, you know, there's a lot of individual situations that are just heartrending. There's a family that I met that's starting a business that was supposed to open this week, and it just, they didn't know what to do. And so they're trying to figure things out, and that's just hard to listen to, and it's... We all get caught in situations, and we're unlucky.
Okay.
And that's all I can say about that. I noticed all of our gyms are closed, and the YMCA is closed. And I'm glad to hear that the city is working on improving or upgrading or keeping our parks clean and the equipment available for us, because I kind of got a feeling with the spring, everybody's going to get itchy to go out and enjoy the weather, and we definitely have some first-rate parks and first-rate trails for us to use, so we're proud of that. Is there anything in our restrictions here that you... Pretty much standard? We're not doing anything unique? And let's see if we have some comments from the folks in the audience, if you're ready for that right now? If you will come forth and set your name, say your name and address.
My name is Linda Grimes, and my husband and I own the Lemonade House Grill at Danforth and Kelly. We're only about 15 months old, so we're still struggling in the new business period. I would like to respectfully request, and thank you for your time, to the Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate it. I would like to respectfully request that the regulations for the temporary signage be relaxed at this time so that we can advertise to-go and delivery at the street level, if that would be acceptable.
Great point.
I think that's a reasonable request.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
I think that's critical, that we do whatever we need possible for all of our businesses to be able to change their venue, change their business model to be able to advertise so that they can get customers in there.
It just hit me, if we can allow campaign signs during our campaigns, our political campaigns, then I think we can allow some leeway during this.
I didn't know they were allowed.
Do you want to make that a motion, or do you want to...
I think we heard that in the first... That's an objection from the members of the council, the city manager, they can make that happen.
Okay.
We heard that in Clarissa.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience here to speak? Mr. White? (laughter) Well, you had a whole crew here, so I... Three generations. All right. Yes, ma'am? Hello.
Hi. Cheryl Janus, 2701 Old Farm Lane, and I just wanted to just bring attention to, I know that you're letting the restaurants continue and doing curbside pickup. However, the servers in these restaurants rely on tips, and I know you guys have nothing to do with tipping people, but knowing another family that owns a little business here in Edmond and asking them how that's going, and they're saying, oh, maybe every other person is tipping to go. So I hope that you guys would reconsider this at your next meeting and just see how things are going, because it's really, really hurting our servers. So anyway, I just wanted to...
Which business do you have?
We have AutoWorks. We have an auto repair shop here in Edmond.
Oh, that's right.
So, yeah, we fix your cars, but we're actually having our shop... Oh, they're fogging it on tomorrow with an antibacterial viral thing, so that's another thing businesses could do if they wanted, but we're doing that to kind of help with our customers and stuff too. But just being here forever and knowing lots of small businesses, I just really...
What business is that?
We have AutoWorks. It's an auto repair shop here in town, so we fix cars. We don't feed you, but we fix your cars, so you can go out and get food. But anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention as you're thinking about the restaurants. It's great that we're keeping the restaurants open and letting them do that, but also, please revisit this as soon as you can to, you know, help the people that are actually serving your food.
Well, I would encourage all of our people to do gift cards or whatever it takes to show the citizens and our restaurant owners that we believe in them and that we want them to survive this, and however that happens, if we can be a little gracious with our gift cards and stuff like that, maybe that might be the answer for some of you. And it's certainly, certainly, believe you me, the business community is resourceful. They will find a way, okay, to make this happen, and we already see how many have already adjusted their business model to accommodate the new situation. And not everybody's going to be cooking every night.[1674.12][1674.12](laughter) I'm sure of that. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
I don't really feel compelled to state my name or my address at this time, but I am an Edmond resident and an Edmond business owner, and I'm confused about the lack of specificity in assigning which businesses are going to be shuttered. Nail salons come in direct contact with humans face-to-face every day. They do not meet the threshold requirements for six feet away from each other. However, other businesses can honor that spatial requirement, but yet, they're being shuttered. So I'm not understanding why we're taking the same ham-handed approach that Oklahoma City is. I was hoping that Edmond would be a bit more sophisticated, so I feel a bit let down by that, and I'm glad that you guys are positive that business owners can be resourceful, but I don't think you guys quite understand the economic devastation that it is going to cause our community. I was hoping to hear something different tonight and that Edmond would maybe look to how many people were in a business at a time and honor that, because there are plenty of small businesses that can do that. So it's unfortunate that that's the direction that we've decided to go.
Well, the salon business has gotten the attention. I think the state of, I mean, Tulsa has added that to their list of restrictions, and we will be discussing this. It's open for discussion at our next council meeting, which will be next Monday, and Oklahoma City put their declaration out and amended it two days later, so these things will... It's a moving target.
Right. It is worth considering the fact that a lot of businesses can honor the requirement of only having one or five people. Right now, the requirement is 10. We have more than 25 in this room, so we're not honoring that right now, today. We have more than 25 in this room, so we're not honoring that right now, today, in this moment.
Well, excuse me, I think we should point out that we haven't made that restriction on anybody.
You stated that, though, at the beginning of the meeting, that we're trying to honor that.
Well, we are trying to honor.
We're trying, we're not. My business can, and a lot of other businesses can honor that. So I am pleading for you guys to at least consider the fact that you can approach this differently and you can look at it as far as attendance goes and you could keep more businesses open. Because it's great that there are small business loans out there, but that is not a realistic option at 3.5%. That's not a good plan. When you're going to cause these businesses, you and the rest of the nation are going to cause these businesses to sink. So then you're going to say, well, we can fix you by taking out a loan. So basically, you're just digging the hole deeper for them.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
I would just like to say again, we have not mandated anything like that. And as far as I'm concerned, we're not going to mandate anything like that. Restrictions of 10 people or 50 people or whatever, that has to do with city function, city property, so forth. We are not mandating anything like that for any private business. The only suggestion by some has been used common sense or maybe there's some guidelines, but it is certainly not a requirement.
Any other comments? Anyone else in the audience care to speak?
All right. I think I would just mention that I don't know how you pick and choose, which, I'm a small business owner. And, you know, at what point is my business chosen? And I don't know. The answer is I don't know. But my gut is that the more consistent we can say, stay with Oklahoma City and our neighbors, the less confusing that is to our business owners and to our customers. And so again, I'm not one that's picking and choosing what we're doing with Oklahoma City as well. We can choose our own, but I do, I think there is a lot to be said for consistency so we don't cause more confusion.
Well, I had a haircut tonight, right before the council meeting. And the understanding I had there is there's definitely less people having regular, attending their businesses, okay?
Everybody.
And it's cut back way back. And they are making certain restrictions, like they said, no new customers or something along those lines. Everybody's qualifying how they react to the normal day-to-day things. And that's the way it's going to be. And I think the further the federal government and the state governments and the city governments stay out of that, everybody will have to make their own risk assessments associated with those kind of services. And that sort of let the free market work.
Works for me.
But it seems that most of the businesses and most of the communities have been able to do, have already reacted and made the decisions. And that's really sort of remarkable. Because in one week, we've had this kind of a flip. Just pretty spectacular, really. Any other comments from the council?
I have a few comments I'd like to make. You know, I've, just like everyone, I've struggled with this since, especially in the last couple of days as we look at this declaration and as we look at mandating requirements on private business of what they can and can't do. And it's just, I'm very concerned about that. Generally speaking, I don't think it's government's place to be telling the business how they can operate, whether they can continue to operate with, obviously, within the laws. But having said that, we are dealing with a crisis and there are things that we need to do to help to get through this. I'm very concerned that, I don't like these rules that we're placing on private business. I think we're dangerously close to government overreach. This is contrary to everything I believe about personal choice and free market capitalism and private enterprise. However, some of this we just need to do. A lot of this, I think, would get taken care of anyway. Business, if you know anything about owning a business, you're not going to sit there with a business open if you don't have customers coming in. You'll take care of that. And if the customer is comfortable, they can come, but if there's not enough of them, the business owner will close. So I think 99% of this is going to take care of itself. But unfortunately, there are some that won't. So as we look at the restrictions here of what can and cannot happen in certain businesses, I think we have to do some of this. My caution is, is I don't want to do it a day longer than we absolutely have to. Originally, this declaration had a suggested date of April 12th. And we can certainly talk about that. I asked staff to change the date to April 6th because that's the same day. The schools are going back to schools as declared by the Oklahoma Superintendent of Public Schools. At least that puts business owners, the businesses that are required to not operate or operate under restricted terms, puts them on a level playing field with that. I think we need to review it. At the same time, there's, I think, probably a good possibility that by the time we get to April 6th, the schools may say, we're staying closed the rest of the semester. Maybe, maybe not. But I think at least putting that date out to April 6th gives our businesses, particularly those that are struggling in any way, at least a little bit of hope that we're going to be reviewing this on an ongoing basis. And hopefully, that's 17 days from now. I'm hoping we'll have more information by then. It's either going to look worse or look better. I would like to also propose that we tentatively schedule a special city council meeting on the 6th. That's a Monday evening. Our next one regular is not till April 13th. I'd like to schedule that at 5:30 on the 6th for us to review these dates. If things, if our information has changed, we can, we can stop doing what we're doing. We can extend it, certainly have a discussion about it. But I think at least gives some of our business owners who, I'm very concerned for some of them, that they're dangerously close to having a serious problem here. We're facing an economic crisis here and I understand that we need to do what we need to do here. I fear that we're doing the economic equivalent of killing the patient in an attempt to kill the virus. And we need to be careful that we don't do more than we absolutely have to. So that was my reason for changing the date to April 6th. We can certainly discuss that as a council. If you want to use a different date, then we can, we can talk about that. But that was my reason for changing the date and why I think it's appropriate at this time. We're all dealing with a difficult situation here. I personally have no problem of doing special council meetings if we need to so that we can review and pass things. That's the least we can do to support our businesses and our citizens. So I'm willing to meet anywhere, anytime as we go through this to adjust as we, as we go. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my reason for why I wanted to change some of those dates. My concerns about all of this, we have to do what we have to do, but I really caution us, let's not do more than we absolutely have to so we can get back to normal as soon as possible.
Matt, what was the number that we have in the county now? 27 in our county?
29.
29.
I'm sorry, 29 for the state, 14 for Oklahoma County.
14.
And a total of 20 in the metro area.
I think Friday, we had our first in Oklahoma County and now we're up to a different number. Did you say 18 or 11 or what was the number for Oklahoma County?
14.
14. It's growing exponentially. And anyway, we will see that number in the.
I agree with the, I know there was a lot of discussion on the date. Councilman Massey, you said, go ahead and preset that date for the 5th, but there's a week between the 23rd and the 5th, or the 6th date. So my thing is.
We might as well.
Might as well look at that week too, that, just the plan that we could, to meet weekly and to discuss it. Because the processes that we go through in Edmond, we all, we have to come together to vote. So I've already committed to everyone here that anytime, anyplace, give me a call, I'm there for us to have a meeting. And so we might as well look at that week between the 23rd and April 6th and plan something in that date too, as a placeholder, so that until this is over, we need to keep this room in this configuration and just make it part of our weekly agenda that we're going to, we may have to get together. And I agree, as soon as we can lift this, the restrictions, we lift them.
I want to compliment staff, this is novel ideas. And I thought this worked out pretty well. You like it, Josh?
I do.
Yeah. I don't know what we're going to do with David.
We'll find a place.
Be back by then.
Hey, can I take a minute?
Sure.
And I have, I'll speak to all the families out there for a second. We have two seven-year-olds at home and I think we're all about to go crazy already. So I just want to encourage, it's early in this with the school, obviously with the schools being closed, we're on spring break, but we've got another week to go that they're talking about. But I would just encourage, you know, all of our families, including my own, to spend as much quality time as we can together. Get outside. If the weather's nice, there's no rule that says we can't go on a walk or a hike, can ride bikes, or work in the yard. So I would just encourage everybody to stay active and lift each other up. And for us as adults, just be good examples for our kids during this time. This is, this is going to easily be confusing for them. And we can either show the way, in a good way, or not. And so I would just encourage us all, my wife and I included, to just be a good example for our youth in our town because they're going to be in our place someday, doing the same thing we are in different ways. Again, I'd like to lift up our healthcare workers in our community, also our policemen and our firemen and everything that they do and such thankless jobs. And so I'm thinking, thinking about you guys so much, all the time. And then also our city employees, just keep the lights on in the city and all of our services that are so easy to take for granted. And so thank you to all of them. And then again, for our school board members and school administrators.
Anything further? Do we, are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
We have a draft here. We need a motion to.
I don't think we had any amendments, did we, or any revisions?
No, no changes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the declaration of emergency regarding COVID-19 as published.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, would you cast your vote? Thank you very much. That motion's passed. Effective midnight tonight, this will be passed. It's, we have our city staff make a proclamation on that or do a press release on that tonight or tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. And anything else? We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please cast your vote, counsel. Thank you all very much.